Okay, see this? This is where you.
So you guys are gonna be watching the meeting from the fire, uh, fire station, is that the deal now?
No, we're just getting Marty's camera set up, what he got for it.
Gotcha, looks good, looks like it works just fine.
Yeah, thank you, enjoy your evening.
Okay, can you hear me? Hello, hello, hello?
I hear you.
We can hear you just fine.
Great, okay.
You're coming in really good.
Good, glad, glad you can hear me. Mixer Nixon, you have a shadow.
I'm trying to fix this right now.
Oh, that is all different sorts of terrifying, John.
At least you're online.
Okay, I think that'll work.
Very good, good clear picture, John.
Okay.
See, no, I wanna be wherever Judy Reed is.
I wish I was where that background is too.
Not me, it's too hot.
It was a beautiful day today, though.
Hey, Mike? Do I need to remove the, uh, cross behind me?
Uh, no.
Okay. I didn't know if it was like, you know, separation church and state, I don't know.
Are, are you trying to promote your church by having a cross behind you?
No, that's for my dad's funeral.
There's some over here. I don't know if my ears are big enough for these.
Okay, my clock on my computer is showing seven o'clock, is, is that synced up with where we are at the city?
Yep, seven o'clock here too.
Is there any reason why, it looks like we have a quorum, if I'm counting right, is there any reason to not get started?
Uh, none that I can think of, other than nobody ask, uh, Madam Clerk if she's prepared and ready to go.
I'm ready to go.
Okay. Well then, uh, it's seven o'clock, let's call the meeting to order. Uh, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Behind me here, I think, I, you can see it's lagged there, if I can get out of the way. Everyone's ready? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, uh, roll call. Mr. Dale Bray. There's a couple people on here that I don't recognize, I don't see names attached, so I don't.
I do not see Dale Brady listed.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Clint Conley is here, uh, Mr. Jerry Hall.
Here.
Mr. Daniel McGrath.
Here.
Uh, Mr. John Nixon? I see you.
Hello.
Okay, uh, Mr. Harrison Owens. No, no Mr. Owens, then, and Mr. Ashley Watson. Have we heard from either Mr. Owens or Mr. Watson?
We have not, my understanding was that, uh, they were both still supposed to be, uh, here and on council, uh, on, on the board, but I do not see them present.
Okay, so if, is my understanding correct that we now have seven members at this moment, so that, since we have four here, we have a quorum?
Uh, that is my understanding.
I think you need to have, you have, uh, nine planning commissioners, so you need five to have a quorum.
Um, we have seven commission members, we've had two resign, sorry.
Right.
Sorry, I have to tape this, give me one second.
I'm deferring to Mr. Womack's understanding, I'm not sure.
Well, I, I would say if, if the ordinance authorizing the planning commission said it's created with nine members, then nine members is illegally, is a legal number, and you need five to have a quorum.
Oh, and now we do.
Great.
We let the record show that Mr. Dale Bray is now here?
Yeah, I had a hard time getting the Zoom to come up.
Okay.
Sorry, everybody, I think I've got two more, I've got Harrison on the phone, and it looks like Mr. Bray just showed up, so give me one second. Alright, my apologies, I've got Mr. Harrison Owens and Mr. Bray, um, Mr. Conley, if you'd like to acknowledge that.
Okay, so, uh, prior to this, I, I acknowledge that Mr. Bray is here, and also, we now have Mr. Harrison Owens here as well.
Hello.
Hello. Okay, I mean, in addition, we have, uh, our planning official, we have, uh, Mr. Tim Johnson, we have our city manager, Mr. Womack, our city clerk, this is Rebecca Jock Johnson, and I believe, uh, Ms. Napparowski is also here today? If I saw that correctly?
Uh, I believe so.
And, um, now, we need, um, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at the minutes from, uh, last time, from September first, twenty twenty, but we need a motion to approve those minutes.
I would move to approve.
A second.
Anything we need to look at on those, or any amendments that need to be made? Not hearing any, um. All in favor of approving the mission, or approving the minutes from last meeting, September first, twenty twenty, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. The minutes are approved, um, next, today's agenda, uh, if I have, I don't have the, the, uh, number on our packet, the page in our packet that the agenda's on, but I'm assuming it's right near the beginning, I have a paper copy here, um, take a chance, take, look over the agenda today, and if there's anything we need to look at, we should discuss it, um.
Mr. Conley, I would add, uh, ask to add one thing, if I may.
Sure.
So, under, uh, let's see here. Under nine D as in dog, I'm sorry, E as in elephant, uh, I was given additional information regarding the garage at one, two, three Oak Street. Uh, I did previously email this to the board about three or four o'clock today, um, I, I know it doesn't help a lot, cause it's not in the packet at this time, but I could bring it up on share screen to show you, uh, and I would like it to eventually, uh, be part of the, I guess, minutes and record. So I would ask to add that additional information.
Okay. Any, anything else we need to address on today's agenda? Do you have a motion to approve it?
Make that motion, we approve it.
A second.
All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, today's agenda is approved, oh, let's see. This is the time when we have the opportunity for public comments, um, anyone that would like to speak to anything either on the agenda or not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to do so. Mr. Womack, do, would you like to do this the same way we have in prior Zoom meetings, where we poll the people that are here?
Sure, um, so I've got some people, uh, who have appeared in the virtual meeting, and then I think we may also have one or two people in the council chamber, so I can defer to, uh, the clerk at that time, but let me run down the list of people I have virtually. I will call out their name, ask if they have public comment, uh, if they do have public comment, that would be your time, if not, uh, I'd appreciate if you'd say no comment, or something to that effect. Um, so first on my list I have is Mike West, Mike West, do you have public comments at this time?
No, not at this time.
I have Judy Reed, Judy Reed, do you have public comment at this time?
No.
I have phone number six, one, six, eight, two, four, one, two, 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 do you have public comment at this time?
No.
I have six, one, six, nine, zero, one, two, five, six, five, do you have public comment at this time?
No.
Uh, let's see here, I have Haley's iPad, does Haley's iPad have public comment at this time?
No, thank you.
Uh, I have Tommy Nafso, Mr. Nafso, do you have public comment at this time?
None, thank you.
Apologize, I've got two people who've just joined the queue, so let me put them in, and I'll see if they have public comment at this time. Uh, Aaron, Aaron who's just joined us, Aaron, do you have public comment at this time?
Right here.
Oh, they keep joining me, okay, I see Andrea Hendrick, Andrea Hendrick, do you have public comment at this time?
No, thank you.
And one last person just joined us, give me one second here. I have Cindy D, Cindy D, who's just joined the meeting, would you like to make any public comment? Okay, and now, they keep coming, I apologize, I have somebody by name of Isis Axie, Isis Axie, do you have a public comment at this time? Okay, that's everybody I have so far. Um, Ms. Johnson, do you have anybody in the council chamber who'd like to make a public comment?
There is no one in the chamber comment that has comments, oh, looks like maybe two individuals might be joining us. Let me see if they have any comments.
Leonard Cadwell?
Go ahead, speak real loud for me.
Leonard Cadwell, I'd like them to make sure that they don't run the construction equipment through our residential area now, like they did when they did the last portion up there. They told us they weren't going to run it up Needlewood, but it did, probably half of them went up Needlewood and across, instead of going into, that road up where they were supposed to be.
Thank you.
Jerry Moore, you're in on the same comment, uh, our roads are pretty well destroyed from, uh, big trucks going up and down all the time, if they would, uh, go the shortest distance, it would not be up Needlewood, but they still went up Needlewood and wandered around all the turns to get to the sites where they were going, instead of going up, uh, fur and run. So we're just, wanna make sure that they don't use our street again, cause it's terrible, tough hole everywhere.
Thank you for your comment.
And that is all the public comment we have in the room.
Um, I hate to bring attention to it, but there was, uh, a series of very inappropriate comments that were added to the chat session, I'm not sure what our, um, what our recourse is for that, but just a reminder that obviously this is a public meeting, and this is an important, um, public forum, this is not the place for hateful comments, and, um, I don't know what Mr. Womack's powers are regarding with the, the, regarding Zoom, as far as that, we, we wanna keep this an open meeting, but we hope that we don't have any more comments like that.
Mr. Conley, I did see that, and I attempted to locate the individual, uh, they don't appear to be with us anymore, uh, but I've changed the chat status to chat with the host only, so, uh, additional chats will come to me only.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, um, moving, uh, well, was there, there was also a letter I see in the, in, under public comments in the agenda from Mr. Harrison, Phil Harrison, is this, uh, is this the time that we would like to, that we would, um, address that, or are we going to wait until we are at the next, or at the public comment part of the public hearing?
Um, I guess it doesn't really matter to me, um, I'm happy to read it into the record, of course, it's written down, so anybody can read it anytime, but I guess, whatever the chair would like.
I'm not requiring you to read into the record, I just wanted to make sure that we, that we addressed it, because it was written into the agenda, I didn't wanna jump over it.
Okay, well, I, I acknowledge it, I spoke with Mr. Harrison, uh, he had similar concerns to the two gentlemen who are here, uh, at City Hall, um, primary of which is, I think, the construction traffic.
What do I knew?
Okay. Uh, the next thing then on the agenda is, this is the opportunity for any members of the planning commission to declare if they've had any conflicts of interest, or any ex parte communication related to any of the business that we are going to take on tonight. Seeing, seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearings, so tonight we have a couple of public hearings, um. Both, uh, well, for a planned unit development and for a site condominium development by the same applicant. Uh, we'll open the hearing, uh, we'll open the first hearing on a public hearing for a planned unit development district by Westview Capital, uh. I'm not sure how we wanna proceed, other than, I'm assuming, uh, the applicant may have, want, uh, may wanna give a brief description of, of what we're, what we're hearing tonight? Is the applicant here for that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, Mike West, Westview Capital, uh, seven, nine, five Clyde Court in Byron Center.
Thank you.
Um, first of all, thank you very much for, uh, considering our PUD request, um, also like to thank, uh, Mr. Womack for his assistance, as well as, uh, Mr. Johnson for his assistance during the plan review with their comments and so forth. Um, if, if it would be okay, I'd like to do a short presentation, I have a couple of materials, uh, plans I'd like to share, I don't know if Mr. Womack would need to allow me to do that, or whether I can do that just right now, Mike?
I, I believe you were able to do that, but go ahead and try, and if not, I'll, I'll see what I have to do.
Um, is, is that visible on your screens?
Um, I'm not seeing anything, no.
Here we go.
You, you got it now?
Yep.
All right.
I see it.
All right, um, I know you have a lot of materials in your agenda packets, um, I don't wanna be too overly redundant, you have a thorough staff report from Mr. Johnson as well, but I just wanted to summarize our development proposal, um, what we're looking to do is a one hundred and six lot site condominium subdivision, uh, in a PD format. Um, this, this rendering right here shows the overall development plan, um, it's proposed in four phases, a total of forty-three, a little over forty-three and a half acres, uh, four phases, this being the first phase in this light yellow right here, um, it's, would involve a northerly extension of Pioneer Trail with a temporary cul-de-sac. Phase two then would shift over to here off of, uh, Cedar Springs Avenue here, phase two would come up to about here, also with a temporary cul-de-sac. Phase three would connect the two, connect phase one and phase two. And then finally, phase four would be this section in the southeast portion of the property, a cul-de-sac, and then an extension, uh, this would, I guess, would be needlewood that would allow for future extension of needlewood to the, to the south as well. Um, the reason we chose the PD, uh, PUD ordinance for this particular development is, uh, we have some natural features on the property, um, wetlands right here in the dashed line here, over here, these are regulated wetlands, and then there's also some, uh, some stormwater area here and here, and then there's also this area around the wetland in this area north, the northwest corner of the property, that we thought would make a, a very good amenity to the residents of this development. Um, collectively, we have about over fifteen acres in, uh, in dedicated open space, uh, about half of that in area involves either stormwater pond or wetland, but then there's a, a rather large chunk of another seven and a half acres or so, that consist of uplands and, and woods and fields that we think, uh, we could develop into a, an amenity for these residents within this, uh, subdivision. We'll have public water and sewer, will serve the property, uh, public street extensions, uh, be it site condominium form of ownership, so there is a master deed with bylaws, there will be a homeowners association. Um, the existing zoning, uh, is R1, so it, uh, requires sixty-six foot wide lots, uh, roughly eighty-seven hundred sque- square feet in lot area with ten-foot side yard setbacks. Under the proposed PUD, we are proposing minimum lot width of fifty-eight feet with a range between fifty-eight and eighty-nine feet, seventy-two square feet in, in lot area minimum, and then six foot on the side yard setbacks. Um, the main reason we're proposing that is, again, to prevent any, any additional street extension, uh, under a traditional type of subdivision, under an R1 subdivision into this area. Um, what I'd like to do now is transition over to a alternative plan. Um, this was done early on in, in the process, when we first, uh, entered the purchase agreement, uh, with Mr. Stelma. Under the R1, this would be an, a, a comparable plan for the R1, uh, development, and, and where you see this Pioneer Trail coming up, and, and under the PUD, it would turn to the east and head out here, and we would preserve this area as kind of common open space, our, our, our one C comparable to get comparable number of lots would require a cul-de-sac extension, um, where that turn is. So this, this is really the area, I think, that we focused on, this western portion of the property, under an R1, uh, scenario, or if I flip back to here, under a PD, PUD scenario, and again, the reason for that, it's the same number of lots, it's just that, um, these lots here are your standard, uh, R, R1 with lots, and under this scenario, it would be the reduced lots, same number, just narrower, uh, with six-foot side yard setbacks instead of ten. Um, we have done this in, uh, dozens, if not hundreds, of other communities, we have a, a large portfolio of homes that can adequately fit on these lots, and not take up the whole lot, I know when we're asked for six feet, we rarely put a house six foot on either side to the edge of the property line, it allows for flexibility in the type of homes, whether the purchaser wants to customize that home, whether they wanna add a third star, stall garage, it allows flexibility, but we rarely use the entire width even on these narrower lots, and these are really the narrower ones, these, these fifty-eight footers are, are, are along here, um, there's some wider ones as you get, um, on the south side, as well as down some of these cul-de-sac streets. Um, what I'd like to do is summarize, again, you got a lot of materials in your agenda packet, and I know, uh, got a thorough staff report from Mr. Johnson, but I'd just like to briefly indicate some of the qualifying conditions for PUD, and why we believe. some of the qualifying conditions for PUD and why we believe our plan does satisfy those. So there's six conditions under section uh forty dash six oh one that we're supposed to demonstrate that uh, to be eligible for a PUD. And the first one is the demonstrated benefit, uh, minimum of two of those requirements. We believe we have three of those met, um, the first one being the preservation of significant natural or historic features. Again, this area right here, we feel is not a typical subdivision plan. Collectively, this whole area is a little over ten acres. It's almost one quarter of the overall property. Uh, we think that is a a significant difference than again, than this alternative plan right here under the R1. Um, the second uh demonstrated benefit would be the common open space area. Again, this area here uh, for both passive and active recreation. There is a a path, a walking path that's proposed through here that would wrap around the um, the wetland area. Come out here between lots one and two and then through here. We're proposing this as a concrete uh sidewalk to this point, concrete sidewalk to this point. But what we, when we get into the natural area, we want to keep this path natural. And we found that just using a mode path, a maintained mode path is is the best we can find for the neighbors and for the residents for a natural setting with minimum maintenance. You know, paving it takes away from the natural area back there. Um, woodchips, they look good for the first month, but they're very difficult for the homeowners association to maintain long term. Um, they get weeds that go through them, um, they need to be maintained, they get kicked around. So a mode path we've used uh several times in many other communities and it's worked out very well. And in addition to this walking path, there's some clear open area here as well. That allows, that allows uh, the residents, not just one or two residents to use it, but all hundred and six under this uh alternative plan. Um, Mike, I don't know if that's me or what, but uh.
I believe that's that the person that's designated is I C Axi.
Oh yeah, I see. I see some commentary there.
Possible to remove them from the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to continue?
If if you are able to, I understand this is very distracting with someone's writing all over your presentation.
That's okay.
Do you, do we need to have the presentation up anymore? Or is it, or is it something that we can?
Well, um, I I think let me, if I can go through the other five conditions real quick, maybe we can just kind of, I can still bounce back and forth. If if the commissioners can ignore the little red lines through there, I think we can, we can get through this. So the third uh demonstrated benefit is we do think that 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 the PUD plan um does offer a a better and a and a more unique housing uh option than a traditional subdivision. Um, we're going to have this large area of natural s- open space uh preserved. Um, not just for, not not just for the individual property owners, because you see this natural, I mean, we do have a cul-de-sac and there is a large area of of natural area preserved under the R1C. But what they are are the backyards of these individual property owners, so they're private property uh, as opposed to this scenario where this area is um accessible to all hundred and six residents within the subdivision. Um, under the the second condition of the qualifying conditions talks about availability and capacity of public services. We believe there's no unreasonable increase in the use of public services or utility capacities. Um, the PUD uh plan will actually, um, it's the same number of lots, so you're going to have the same uh number of users on your system. But without, without an R1C, you eliminate this cul-de-sac, so you eliminate about a six hundred foot long cul-de-sac along with uh, you know, another six hundred feet of public water and sanitary sewer main, which um, we think is a benefit to the city as well as far as long-term maintenance and legacy costs associated, associated with that. Um, the third criteria talks about compatibility with the master plan. On the future land use plan does designate this property as appropriate for low-density residential. Um, just a snippet from that uh, from that designation, it talks about a host uh, single-family development with neighborhood setting with development densities ranging between one and five units per acre. Um, the proposal under this uh PUD is a little under two and a half units per acre. Also talks about the character of the neighborhood should match that of the existing neighborhood and um these houses and uh the neighborhood will have a very similar look and feel to the neighborhood to the south. Prairie Run, which is an R2 zoning district, which does have the um narrower lot widths and setbacks, very similar to what we're proposing here uh, for White Pine Trails. Um, there's also a chapter uh, under the action plan for housing that uh, from the master plan that speaks to promoting new residential developments to diversify housing choices and to utilize planned unit developments for new moderate density traditional residential developments. Um, we believe uh, the PUD plan that's in front of you tonight does uh satisfy and is consistent with those goals and and designations that are in the plan. Uh, number four is compatibility with uh, the PUD purpose. And uh, that is a long uh, couple paragraphs in your ordinance. But uh, in in summary, it indicates that the PUD designation is designed as a design option intended to permit flexibility in regulation to encourage innovation and land use, form of ownership such as condominiums and a variety of different design layout and types of structures constructed to achieve. And I just picked four things out of the purpose. To achieve economy and efficiency in the use of land, which we believe this plan does do better than the R1 plan. To preserve significant natural features, historical or architectural features in open space. Three would be to promote efficient provision for public services and utilities. And four would be to allow clustering of residential units to preserve common open space, reduce construction cost and enhance marketability. Uh, again, for the reasons I indicated previously, we believe this design does uh, addresses all those issues uh, consistent with the intent and purpose of the PUD ordinance. Um, the last two uh considerations are development impact. Uh, proposed PUD will not impede the continued use of development of surrounding properties. We do not believe it will. Um, as you can see in this plan, we do have uh, future street extension, needlewood here in phase four, which will allow for future street extension to the south and interconnection with needlewood to the south. And then we've also put in two outlets to the north, even though that is out of your jurisdiction. It will still allow for possibility of uh, connection, neighborhood interconnections if something was to develop to the north in the future. And finally, uh, unified control of the property. Um, the uh, proposed PUD will be under a single ownership and control with a single entity and that'd be Westview Capital having responsibility for completing uh, the entire project in conformity with the regulations. And as indicated, it would be a four-phase development. So if I could, uh, just to summarize real quick, we believe the PUD plan is a far superior plan than the R1. We believe it's more creative and unique subdivision design with no increase in the number of lots uh, under an R1 comparable plan. Uh, we believe there's similar lot widths and setback standards and home construction style to the existing R2 neighborhood to the south, which would be the Prairie Run subdivision. Uh, thirdly, we believe preservation of a large functional open space area for both active and passive recreation and enjoyment by not individual property owners, but all hundred and six residents of the subdivision. Uh, it is smaller overall development footprint when you compare it to the R1 subdivision plan. And then as previously indicated, it will be a result of reduction in the overall length of the public streets and public water and sanitary sewer main extensions approximately six hundred feet less than under the R1 um, plan, which will be less infrastructure repair and and maintenance for the city. So with that, Mr. Chairman, um, I I thank you very much for allowing me to do the introduction and um, I'm here for any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Um, we are going to discuss um, as a, as the planning commission, we're going to be discussing this in the new business. So um, I intend to move along then to the public hearing, the public part of the public hearing. And if there's anyone in the public that would like to have an opportunity to speak on this issue, this would be your opportunity to do so. Mr. Womack, uh, do you want to do this the way we've done it before? With the, with the calling of the role or?
My apologies, I was muted there for a second. I was trying to learn all about Zoom. Apparently uh, I didn't do enough to prohibit uh, people from doing what they were doing. So I was learning up on it, so um.
I appreciate you valiantly working behind the scenes. We saw, we saw some results there. Uh, it's very difficult to troubleshoot these things as they're happening.
Oh kids, these days, you know.
Never met one.
Okay, so uh, I'm going to go down the list. Um, let's see, Mike West, you've already talked enough, but would you like to make a public comment?
No, you're correct. I've talked enough.
I have six one six eight six two two six zero two. Would that person like to make public comment?
Yeah, I would like to know why they couldn't extend that street clear out to Cedar Springs Avenue instead of running all your heavy construction equipment through the residential neighborhood to the south there on uh, either Need- uh, Needlewood or the other west street there, Pioneer Trail. And the streets in the town are bad enough as it is without running that much construction equipment through that residential area.
Mr. Crowley, I I know it's the city council's policy not to address uh, questions, thoughts, concerns during the public comment. Uh, but I I know that a lot of the members of the public will be commenting on that particular aspect of of these plans. Uh, and I do think we can maybe cut down on some of the public comment or concern if we indicate now that uh, we've discussed that at length and my understanding is that the planning commission will require that uh, a construction road be created. Uh, Mr. West, if if you could, could you address that concept is uh um, this development going to include a construction road coming in off Cedar Springs Avenue?
Yes, and and that will be this, the constructed with phase one and used for all subsequent phases as well. We're not going to run construction traffic through um, the existing neighborhood to the south on Prairie Run. Um, I wasn't here with Westview Capital um, when when Prairie Run, Prairie Run North was constructed. But I don't know if we had even an option on this property here that uh, Mr. Stelma owns back when that was built. So uh, the the possibility of a construction access through, there was likely not an option if we didn't have uh, uh, an option on the property. But everything associated with White Pine Trails, all construction traffic will use Cedar Springs Avenue.
Thank you. Uh, going back to my list, Judy Reed, Judy Reed, do you have a public comment at this time?
I do not.
Uh, I have six one six eight two four one two two two. Do you have a public comment at this time?
No.
I have six one six nine zero one two five six five. Do you have a public comment at this time?
Yes. I read a lot about uh uh, neighborhood associations. And will there, is there going to be any attempt to have a club room or a meeting room for these neighborhood associations to meet? And how do you uh, keep a neighborhood association engaged?
So um, this is, we'll take this as a comment at the moment and um, when this comes up during the discussion, uh, that's, that's definitely something that may, that we can pursue. Is there any further comment?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see here, I have see, names keep shifting around on me, so I apologize. I have Aaron, Aaron, do you have public comments at this time?
I don't, thank you.
I have Andrea Hendrick, Andrea Hendrick, do you have public comments at this time?
No, just that one of our colleagues is waiting in the waiting room. That's it, thank you.
Uh, he was, I let him in just now. Uh, I have Cindy D, does Cindy D have a public comment at this time?
No.
I have Greg, does Greg have public comments at this time?
No, thank you.
I have Haley's iPad, does Haley's iPad have public comments at this time?
No, thank you.
I have Sue, does Sue have public comments at this time?
No.
I have Tommy Nafso, does Tommy Nafso have public comments at this time? I have Tracy Powers, does Tracy Powers have public comments at this time?
No.
And I have Ross Bogdan, does Ross Bogdan have public comments at this time? Uh, I believe that's everybody I've got. Uh, Ms. Johnson, do you have any public comments in the council chamber?
Nobody here left in the council room has any public comment.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, uh, we, I believe we can close this hearing and move on to our next one. Uh, the next hearing is a public hearing for the site condominium development that's related to this development with Westview Capital. Uh, I don't know uh, the best way to handle that, Mr. West, is there anything else that you'd like to address specific to the to the site condominium development aspect of this?
No, I don't believe so, unless you'd like me to address that citizens uh, concerned now or later. The question about the homeowners association and things like that, whether it be a clubhouse, things like that.
Um, sure, go ahead.
Sure. Um, so this particular uh, condominium association, this homeowner association, we don't have any structures involved. So there, there's not going to be a clubhouse or a pool um, or meeting center. It's going to be uh, more for the management of the common open space. Uh, it will be again, open space, passive use, uh, no structures. We've done gazebos and clubhouses in other developments and they've had mixed success. Um, very often the gazebos don't get used as much, they turn out uh, to get vandalized and then the people that uh, are are in that development end up having to incur the cost for the repair. Um, as far as keeping them together, we found that in smaller developments, the homeowners associations aren't as active. They they don't uh, they don't get engaged. Um, the more people you have, the more likely you are to have engagement. Westview Capital will maintain uh, the the majority control over that until sixty-five percent of the homes are sold. At that point, it'll be handed over to the association. So in a hundred and six units, um, we're thinking that it'd be well-engaged. And really, the the maintenance is not going to be overly expensive. They're going to have uh, annual dues for some of the maintenances of the the o- the open space areas, uh, mowing of the path. Uh, they can, you know, they can vote by two-thirds vote to change things within the association too. If they wanted to add a structure, a gazebo or something in that open space area, they could do it through their, through the bylaws of the homeowners association. But we uh, have found that the bigger the association, the the less uh, engaged they are, the more engaged they are, I should say.
Hey, thank you. Is there any public comment on this? And I don't know, Mr. Womack, rather than, rather than doing the roll call, do you think it's possible to um, ask those that would like to comment to unmute and perhaps say their name? And then if we have too many people trying at once, then we can certainly, you know, put them in order, but maybe that might be more efficient.
I guess I'm always happy to try new things.
So if you would like to comment on specifically the site condominium aspect of this, um, or if you have any questions about what that is, uh, this is a good time to put those in and we'll make sure that we um, this isn't a question-answer setting, but if you, if you need clarity, this is a public hearing, so we'd like to hear your comments. Um, if you would like to do that at this time, unmute, uh, say your name. And if we have too many people trying at once, then we'll just, I will pick who goes first and we will work through.
Gerald Hall.
I'm sorry, Gerald Hall?
Yes, on this, uh, which one of the lots are to be site condominiums and which ones are designated for R1 single-family, if they could point that out, please?
Mr. West, do you have control of the screen again or?
Well, I could throw it up again, but um, all one hundred and six lots are going to be part of a site condominium. So all the lots are going to be maintained within the site condominium, not not a, not certain ones. In four phases, but they're all going to be PUD, site condominium, all all controlled under the master deed bylaws in the homeowners association. It'll, it'll be amended every time a phase is added um, to the development.
Uh, Mr. West, I I think there's going to be a little bit of confusion about exactly what that means. Now, I understand, I believe, the Prairie Run North neighborhood is also Now, I understand, I believe, the Prairie Run North neighborhood is also set up like this, is that true?
I, I, I believe it is also a site condominium. The, the issue is I don't think they have many common elements like this one does.
No, they, they don't, but I, I, I guess my point is I think somebody hears the word condominium and they're going to think duplex and that kind of thing. Uh, in reality, this is just a, a legal mechanism, um, and all these homes are still going to be single family homes uh, on their own individual lots, uh, but that the legal mechanism of site condominium, you know, puts together this, this homeowners association, uh, where it helps take care of the common elements of the neighborhood. Um, if you'd like to speak on that for a second, or Mr. Johnson, if you have any input on that, uh, as opposed to a plat?
Yeah, from a visual standpoint, I'll, I'll let Mr. Johnson chime in too, but from a visual appearance, uh, you, you can drive through a site condominium and a traditional plaid and you won't be able to tell the difference, single family detached. Cause both of them have ownership of, of the lot or the unit, whatever you want to call it. So, um, when I had that plan up, each one of those hundred and six units is a defined area and you own not only the land, but the home, just like you would in a plat. Um, I think you're, you're absolutely right, Mr. Womack. The word condominium, people think, well, we own the unit and all the land area around us is owned in common. That's in a, in a condominium form. This is a site condominium. So it's going to look and have the same appearance and function as a traditional subdivision, a platted subdivision. The only difference is it has some common elements, in this case, open space areas, stormwater ponds are going to be maintained by them as well. Um, and, and that's the only difference.
I would agree with that.
With that clarification, is there any other public comment during the, during the public hearing here?
I'd like to make a, can I ask a question?
Sure, if you could identify yourself just for the record.
Rose Powell.
Thank you.
Um, my concern is, I'm sure you've gotten permission from the DNR to cross the White Pine Trail. And there will be a lot of heavy equipment going across it. And we do have a place in town where there's a lot of gravel and dirt dragged onto the White Pine Trail, which makes it a little more difficult for our bikers. Do we have any plans to prevent that sort of thing from happening again? At the site where they're going to have to cross the White Pine Trail? They won't?
I, I might be confused, but I don't think they would be crossing the White Pine Trail because they're coming off of Cedar Springs Ave.
So I can put this on a screen real quick if it would help?
Yeah.
All right, can you guys see my screen?
Oh, that's right, okay. Sorry about that, I was confused.
Yeah, so the road actually crosses the White Pine Trail and then once you're past the road, you don't have to cross it anymore.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing none. I believe we can close the public hearing. We'll be coming back to this pub, this, this subject during, uh, new business in just a moment here. But we'll close the public hearing and we will move on to new business. The first thing on the agenda is discussing the appointment of a new chairperson and a new vice chairperson. Uh, is this the point where I hand this over to the clerk?
Uh, I guess this is a point where the board can discuss this. Um, obviously, Mr. Conley, you're serving currently as vice chairperson. Um, you know, and we, you and I have personally talked about the probably necessity to uh, have both a chairperson and a vice chairperson at the same time, just in case, um, you were to be absent for some reason. But, you know, it's probably appropriate to ask the board whether they want to do that right now, whether they want to hold off for some reason. They desperately think we need to wait till January, which would be our traditional, uh, I think appointment of a chairperson, vice chairperson, but I'll leave it to the board to discuss.
What's the pleasure of the planning commission? Does anyone have an opinion?
Mr. Hall here. I would think that, uh, have Mr. Conley finish out the term as chair in his appointment as vice chair. And see what, if we can get some additional personnel on board so we could nominate, uh, to fill those two positions possibly. Thank you.
I know that I would personally, uh, be happy if there was a person that, if I did have to be absent, uh, knew that they were going to be chairing in my absence. And that, that person was designated in some way, so that's my two cents on it.
Mr. Matt, Romek.
Mr. Owens?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna, uh, ask, um, Sir Womack, do we need to officially designate a chair and vice chair in order to have a backup person? Should Mr. Conley not be available, or are we able to just designate someone who could be the backup in case he is unavailable to join the meeting?
Well, my understanding is right now, Mr. Conley is vice chairperson. Um, I understand that we all like Mr. Conley and I think he does a good job, uh, running the meetings. Um, but somebody would have to make a motion to appoint him as chairperson. Um, I guess, and then he could take nominations for vice chairperson, or in the alternative, uh, the board could ask the clerk to open the floor for nominations for chairperson and do it that way.
Okay. Mr. Conley, are you interested in being the chairperson?
I will continue, um, for the short term, if, if I'm asked to. Uh, so I will, I will, I will continue this role in that I would, if I was elevated chair, I would do it for the short term. Until January where we can make another decision. Mr. Bray?
Yes, that would be my suggestion if we could have you be chairperson until January. Get a temporary vice chairperson until January and then we make a decision in January.
Okay, so procedurally, Mr. Womack, unless, unless someone else wants to weigh in?
Uh, I think we just need a motion to appoint, uh, Mr. Conley as chairperson. Um, I guess a second and then a vote.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of appointing, uh, Mr. Clinton Conley as chair, uh, say aye?
Aye, aye.
All opposed? Okay, so then from this point, Mr. Womack, I can, um, well, actually, do we have to do an oath of office then? Is that how this works?
Um, Ms. Johnson, your thoughts on the matter, or do you want to go through the vice chair and then you can go?
I can do whatever Mr. Conley's, um, pleasure is. I can issue the oath over the phone and then I would reissue it, um, when you come in in person to sign your oath.
I do not need the ceremony if we can avoid it, but, um, I just want to make sure everything's proper.
Mr. Conley?
I can issue your oath at a later date if you, if you so choose.
That sounds good to me, unless, Mr. Womack, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's fine, I was going to say I agree, we can do that as a private ceremony later on, so if you want to open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
That's what I'll do, open the floor for nominations for vice chair. If anyone has any ideas.
I'd make a motion for John Nixon. If he wouldn't mind.
Not reacting at the nomination, I'm reacting to Mr. Nixon's.
I am too. His eyes bonked out of his head.
Wasn't expecting that.
Some second.
Uh, okay, uh, do you need discussion or? All in favor, Mr. Nixon as vice chair, uh, indicate with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, you didn't vote against yourself from what I noticed, Mr. Nixon, so I believe that that makes you the vice chair. Okay, and again, um, you want your oath of office privately, or would you like the, the circumstance now?
I'll just do it when you do yours.
Okay, sounds great. So moving on, um, we have a part B of our new business is, uh, is we're going back to the White Pine Trails, um, PUD plan. Who would like to walk us through the city side of this? Uh, the planner, Mr. Womack, who would like to take this at this point?
Mr. Johnson, would you?
Yes, I'd be glad to do that. You have before you tonight two requests. Uh, one is a planned unit development, site plan, and the second is a site condominium plan for a hundred and six unit, single family subdivision. The, uh, site condo, as Mr. West has pointed out, is simply a way to, uh, divide and sell property. It's, uh, we have a, uh, site condominium ordinance as part of our, uh, city, uh, ordinance. Uh, it's also authorized by state law. The PUD is simply a design tool to, uh, show how the land will be divided. And they provided a site plan that shows that the lots that they are proposing would be, uh, smaller in width and area than the, than the, uh, R1 zoning would permit. But the PUD is, as the design tool allows the planning commission and council to grant that flexibility in the lot size and area, uh, if you feel it meets certain standards. And those, uh, some of those standards are pointed out in my, in my report. So back to process, if I could, the, uh, the process that we're following tonight is for the planning commission to recommend to the council, uh, to approve or deny or approve with conditions of preliminary PUD site plan. Uh, once that recommendation goes to council, the council then can approve it, deny it, or approve it with conditions. If it is approved, then it comes back to the planning commission as a final PUD site plan. So that is the process for the site con, or for the PUD portion. The site condominium, which is a separate motion, would simply be a recommendation to the city council and the council would then, uh, approve it, uh, or not. They would not have to come back to the planning commission as a site condominium, but the site condominium is really wrapped into the PUD. So it's really a package deal, uh, and, uh, one cannot be approved without the other. Uh, in reviewing the, uh, compliance with the PUD recommendations or the requirements of the ordinance, uh, the information provided by the applicant addressed our previous concerns regarding the outlaw to the north, uh, the road right of way, the walking path, they provided information on who's going to construct that and when it will be constructed. It would be constructed in the first phase and they've also showed the limits of the grading. One of the items that came up from public comment was that the commission, uh, should stipulate that all construction traffic would come in from Cedar Springs Avenue and that should be a condition of approval if you move in that direction. Um, Mr. West adequately addressed whether or not this PUD meets the qualifying conditions. The ordinance requires that two of the six, uh, be satisfied. They provided, uh, uh, evidence, uh, in your discretion as to whether or not they meet three of those. They provided evidence that it meets common open space, preserves significant natural features and would provide better housing opportunities for the residents of Cedar Springs. And really, that's kind of a discretionary standard, whether you believe the uh, benefit that is derived from preserving the open space and downsizing the lot really rises to the level of being approved as a PUD. So the benefit of preserving the open space truly offset the reduction in lot sizes and make it a better neighborhood. And that's a discretionary standard that you should discuss and decide whether it meets it or not. The, uh, site condom, or the site condominium portion, uh, in our report on page five, they meet virtually all of the site condominium's submitted requirements. Uh, we're looking for a survey signed by a registered surveyor. Uh, one other point that you should discuss as part of the site condominium is whether or not street trees should be planted, uh, in front of each lot, as is the case for, uh, the lots to the south, Prairie Run North, they do have street trees there. So you have that within your discretion to require street trees. One other thing I would point out in, uh, the reduction of the lot sizes for this project, they really are a little bit larger than, uh, the lots, uh, that had been approved and exist to the south in those subdivisions. Some of those lots, uh, are only fifty-two feet wide and some of them have, have less than seven thousand square feet. So in terms of compatibility, the White Pine Trails PUD site condominium would match up very nicely with the, with the subdivisions to the south in terms of lot width and area. And then in summary, again, going back, as you discuss this, you need to focus in on whether or not this project, uh, meets the qualifying conditions of the PUD and whether or not it meets the, uh, site condominium conditions as well. I did not put a recommendation in my report, uh, I did not know which way you were going to go on this and I didn't really know what we're going to hear from the public. But, uh, I believe at this point in time, I would recommend that, uh, it could meet, it does meet the standards for the PUD and the site condominium and could be recommended for approval to the city council. Uh, does anybody have any questions? Okay, I'll turn it back over to the chairman.
Okay, thank you. Planning commission, do you have anything, any thoughts on this one way or the other? Yes, Mr. Nixon. Uh, your mic is off.
There we go. So in speaking to another member, um, we are a rural, uh, city, not like Grand Rapids. With the smaller lot sizes with the PUD, people aren't going to be able to, like in Needlewood, store anything next to their houses, as in, uh, campers, boats, anything like that, which are required to be stored in the side yard. So then if we look at the R1, with the ten foot, they, they might be able to store things there. So that's the only thing that concerns me about the PUD is that we have, we would be basically shutting out people from storing things at their house with a six-foot side setback.
Mr. Chair, if I could address that for a second?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Womack.
So I agree, and that's one of my primary concerns. Um, of course, you could make the argument that people can go in with eyes wide open, they would know that they can't uh, park their RVs and boats and whatever on the side of their house. And I'm sure that somebody who has looked into the master deed agreement will see that the HOA itself does not allow storage of campers and boats and whatever in the front yard, similar to the city's laws. But, you know, of course, on a day-to-day basis, it's me and the code enforcement officer that have to deal with this issue uh, where people like to have their boats and RVs and whatever else at their house, and I understand that. Um, but, you know, right now, the city's law requires that everything be parked in the side or rear yard. Now, the planning commission is aware that we have spoken at least, uh, informally about modifying that law, uh, that would maybe allow people to park, um, th- those types of things on a hard pack, you know, parking surface in the front yard, uh, during times of the summer when they're actually using it, but at this time, that is not the law. So I, I share Mr. Nixon's concerns and that is my primary concern, otherwise, uh, I think the, the PUD and the site plan condominium are otherwise, uh, fairly well put together. Uh, but I am a little concerned about the side setback on the, on the side yard.
Mr. Bray, you had a, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I'm also concerned about the smaller lots. My assumption is the developer makes more money on smaller lots, but from my perspective, the smaller lots are not what we need in this town right now. We need more lots, maybe at least minimum the size of Prairie Run, like phase one and phase two, if not bigger. My preference is, is we have like half acre or acre lots, not tiny lots that people can't do anything on. We have plenty of those in the city at this point in time.
Did anyone else, anything you'd like to add? So, I am, I want to make sure I'm hitting all the points that Mr. Johnson pointed out. So, the big one was discussing whether or not, uh, we have, you know, we're okay with the lot size modifications and I'm hearing some information on, or I'm hearing some opinions on that. Uh, is there anyone, uh, that, that feels otherwise? Because it, it sounds to me like that's, that can be- Because it, it sounds to me like that's, that can be, if, if we don't have or if we don't have some consensus on that one way or the other, that that's the kind of thing that could kill it. So I want to make sure we have that. So I don't know who was first, Mr. McGrath.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of having bigger lots, but I also appreciate having the nature area. I think that would be a nice addition for the neighborhood. So I don't know if there was, would be a way to accommodate both of those. That would be my only comment.
Mr. Owens?
Yeah, I would pretty much echo Mr. McGrath. I really like having the natural area. I think that's a great feature that I'd like to preserve. And I think that really, I mean, within the town at least, I mean, again, it would be nice if everybody could have an acre to live on and, you know, have big yards and things like that. But I think that realistically, we need more housing availability within the city. I mean, it's in very short supply. And I think that any way that we can, you know, kind of maximize the space that we have available, we should be looking at those options.
Thank you. Mr. Bray?
You know, like other comment about that other, the open space is a lot of it, or most of that open space is off to the west side of the development. The people on the west side of the development may use it, they may not use it. The east side of the development probably won't use it. They probably walked away Pine Trail. It's closer for them. So the east side of the development isn't going to be any benefit for them. I just see that it's nice to have, but I don't think people will use it. It'll just be there for looks more than anything.
I had a question, and I'm not sure who can answer this for me, if this is better for the Mr. West or perhaps Mr. Johnson. But once, under the, under the PUD, if this portion is set aside, this natural area is set aside, is that basically in perpetuity? Or are there mechanisms by which that could be broken and developed on in future?
I can answer that. I think it, it's basically open space in perpetuity. And you, when you approve this PUD site plan, you are designated, designating it as open space. If the developer wanted to come back and, and ask for more housing, he'd have to go through the same, same process to take it out of open space and turn it into houses.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. And i- if, if it's appropriate, I, I would like to share a document with you. If it's appropriate, showing you how the houses would be set on these smaller, the fifty-eight foot wide lots we have. If, if it would be appropriate for, for Mr. Womack to just give me the screen for maybe three or four minutes. I'd like to show you a, a plan that we put together.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, can, you can see these, these different layouts that we have? Okay, so what we did here is we knew that this might be a concern. These are standard fifty-five foot wide lots. So this represents the lots that are on the north side of Larchwood. And it involves several different types of integrity series homes that we plan on building there. The dash lines on each one of these fifty-eight foot wide lots represent the, the approximate building envelope with six-foot side yard setbacks. So as you can see, the, the homes that we're going to put in here, and I think I mentioned it briefly early on, is very rarely, this is, this one right here is the only one where we max out that six and, that six and six-foot side yard setback. Most of the other plans have something in between six and ten. So for example, this one's going to have nine-foot setbacks. This one here, if we put this home on a, on a fifty-eight foot wide lot, we have almost twelve feet on each side. Nine feet on both sides here, nine feet over here, nine feet over here. The reason these, these smaller lots, these narrower lots are what we, what we desire is because most of our homes will fit on here, or they'll give the, the buyer an opportunity to customize something. So if they want to bump out the home, add a third car, stall garage, we have the flexibility to do it. But very rarely are you gonna, you're not going to drive down a road and see house after house after house maxed out at six, six feet on, on each side. It's just, it's just not the way we've done it in other locations. So as you can see in probably every one of these six scenarios that I gave here, we have at least nine feet. Between nine and eleven feet on at least one side of these homes. This one right here, this integrity eighteen thirty is the only one that it's a, it maxes out. It's a, you know, three or four bedroom, two-story, it's wide, wider footprint on that. So I just wanted to alleviate any of the concerns of the commissioners that you're going to go down there and, and on the north side of Larch, Larchwood on, on either side. You're going to see homes that are right up to that six-foot setback. It's, it's just not the way we've done it. But we do like the flexibility to offer different plans on those narrower lots with potential upgrades. If the, if, if the customer desires that. Thank you for that time.
Thank you. So anything else from the planning commission? Mr. Nixon?
I did like the thought of requiring trees. You know, making sure that it is treed, tree-lined streets and stuff. But as, the only question that I have is from R one to PUD. Stretching out, I believe it's Larchwood there. Is the only really concern there, is it really just trying to build up over the wetland? Cause I know that would cost more money. Is that the big concern right there?
Go, go ahead, Mr. West. I believe you're addressing that to Mr. West.
Yes.
Can I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, sir.
Neither development scenarios do we plan on building in the wetland. Neither the R one C, the R one comparative plan I showed, or the PD, none of it involves constructing any homes or infrastructure within the wetland. We're going to stay out of the regulated wetlands in, in both scenarios.
Mr. Johnson, you, you had a comment earlier?
Well, just as maybe a compromise that, that the developer has asked for a minimum of six feet side setback on each lot. But the drawing he showed us tells me they don't really want to do that. But the, if you approve it as six feet, then that could happen. So then you'd have houses that would be as close as twelve feet apart. So what you, you could do is perhaps allow the six-foot side yard setback at a minimum, but require that every house be at least, there'd be at least fifteen feet between each house. So they wouldn't be as close as twelve feet. And that would kind of comply with the, the drawing that Mr. West put up that showed that they, that's kind of how they want to do it. But you would want to make that a condition of approval. That side yard setbacks could be as low as six foot minimum, but then must be at least fifteen feet between any house. So whoever gets there first kind of dictates that, but at least you're going to provide some variety up and down the street in terms of side setbacks.
Any other questions or comments? From the planning commission? Mr. Bray?
I didn't notice it. Is there anything for lighting up and down these streets?
I believe there are streetlights on the plan. Is that right, Mr. West?
Is it on just one side? Are there sidewalks? I guess I didn't notice that.
There's sidewalks on both sides. I believe there's going to be streetlights on one side. I, we haven't got into the detailed construction plans yet. They'll be very similar to the development of the south. I believe there's streetlights on one side of the street. I'm not real familiar with Prairie Run subdivision, but sidewalks on both sides of the streets. And street trees, I remember that did come up. We do not have an objection to street trees. We put them in with Prairie Run North as well. So street tree per lot, two on a corner lot on, on each frontage. We don't object to that at all.
Mr. Chair, so I, I guess I'm sitting here in awe of Mr. Johnson. I always appreciate his insight on some of these things. Mr. West, would Mr. Johnson's thoughts about a fifteen-foot separation between the buildings? Would that would that inhibit the ability of the developer to build this neighborhood, or would that be something that you could work around?
Well, not knowing exactly how it would all lay out, I think we could probably work with that. Another option would be a requirement I think we could probably live with is, is six foot on one side, nine on the other, or eight on the other. So you get your fifteen feet collectively that way too. Six foot on one side, nine feet on the other side. Probably put the nine-foot setback on the garage side. Which would likely, in most cases, would result in at least fifteen feet, I guess, unless you happen to have a, a house, house, house. In, in theory, you could have a twelve, but again, I don't, I don't think either one of them would be overly hindering for us. Either, either six feet and then twelve, fifteen feet separation between, or a six-foot and like a nine-foot side on, on the opposite side.
So hearing that, I think he's addressed my concerns. And Mr. Johnson's thought process of addressing my concerns about the side setbacks on these homes. What the planning commission could do as part of the recommendation is ask that at least one of those be recommended to the city council. And then that would give Mr. West an opportunity between now and the city council approval to look at their plans and see what might best work with what they have going on. Of course, and the city council would have input at their hearing, which is probably going to be not this month, but next month. And, and then, Mr. Chair, just while I have the floor. There is, let's see here, two additional documents that were in here. The city attorney took a whack at the master deed. I would like any approval be subject to the city attorneys, city attorney's approval of the master deed. And then also, the city engineer had their own kind of sample document for a storm drain agreement. Now, I'm fairly certain the master deed addresses storm drains. But the city engineer, of course, would be more comfortable if we executed both documents. So I believe I gave that to the developer to review. But I would ask that, yeah, I would ask that the recommendation be that they also execute the engineer's storm drain agreement. Which of course, Mr. West, you can review that and then take your additional thoughts as a city council for their review.
So just to clarify at this point, what's under discussion? We obviously still have to vote on this, but what's under discussion is the idea that we would have one of the two plans where we either have a guarantee that there's fifteen feet between buildings or we have six feet and nine feet as a setback and as a minimum on, on any particular lot. And that we need, we need approval of the master deed and the stormwater agreement before recommending this.
And I believe street trees as well.
But I saw street trees, but i- isn't that under the next motion for the kind of condominium subdivision plan? Or wish, is it in both places, or how does that work?
Could do it, you could do it under the PUD plan as a condition of approval.
Okay. Oh, and the street trees.
Correct. And as long as we're talking about conditions of approval, you want to make sure that all construction traffic would come in by Cedar Springs Drive. And then just as a, as a, another point, that if it's a, if it's a PUD and you stipulate the setbacks and, and that sort of thing. I think you want to make sure that any, any record of approval would allow the zoning board of appeals to grant variances from the, the PUD chapter as well. Or not. I mean, I've seen it work both ways, but I think you need to put it on the record that, that the normal, the, any conditions you put on it in terms of setbacks, house size would be allowed to go to the zoning board of appeals.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, while we're on that, not to get too deep into the inner politics of the city. But the planning commission has been at the forefront of all this type of development. And we have made them the, kind of the arbiter of, I guess overseeing the zoning administrator. They've also, you know, written into their own approval process, a lot of their own reviews as well. Is it possible for these to be subject to approval from the planning commission instead of the ZBA? Only because the ZBA, I think, is a much more conservative body. And doesn't meet as regularly as the planning commission.
But the ZBA has standards for granting variances, whereas the planning commission does not. So that would be, my preference would be to go to the zoning board of appeals.
I- is it a variance if it's simply the recommendation and requirement that we're talking about right now? Would they be basically violating their own, or just providing an appeal of their own decision-making process?
Well, you, you would be given the, the authority to the zoning board of appeals to have a property owner request a variance for, from the six-foot setback, side setback, or the nine, nine-foot side setback. Because those are not in your current zoning ordinance. So if, so the homeowner, I think, should have the right of appeal from the conditions of the PUD. And there's nothing in your zoning ordinance that says they have that right. So based on my experience, I've seen, I would, I think it would be a good idea to settle that question.
Sure. No, and I, I agree with you. And of course, I agree that there needs to be an appeal process. Maybe I'm being caught up on the word variance. Because variance has specific language within our ordinance and the zoning enabling act. Would it fall still under the, what, non-use variance language? Or this simply be an appeal under some kind of other standard?
It would simply be, most of the time, it's going to be a dimensional variance. A non-use variance, you could call it that, yes.
So just so I can clarify, Mr. Womack. Or Mr. Mercer Johnson, actually, in this, because frankly, I got lost somewhere in the middle of that.
I was talking, I was talking planer ease, sorry, sorry.
Absolutely. So, um, does that, does language, is it, is it, either of your belief that this language needs to be included in a motion that we do right now?
I, I agree that there needs to be some sort of appeal process. I just think Mr. Johnson and I are not in agreement about what that appeal process should be. Maybe I'll leave it up to the city council to address what the appeal process should be. And give us more time to look into, I guess, the legality of it and maybe other options. But make a recommendation that there be an appeal process to that aspect of it.
Okay.
Sure, I, you could, rather than give it to the city council, which is likely to be as confused as we are right now. I think you could send a, a recommendation to the council that, that, that would allow the planning commission to under the final site, PUD site plan for the planning commission to determine the appeal process. That gives you time to think about it, but at least gives you the authority to come up with an answer at the final PUD site plan. Time.
Okay.
Yeah, either works for me.
Boy, I'm glad it's the chair. I don't have to make this motion. That was a joke. So any other discussion before we, we'll go one way or the other on this?
Uh, Mr. West, is the developer married to the name Burning Bush Court? For some reason, I just don't like that name for a road.
So noted. I, I didn't name the roads, but I'll go back to the person that did, and I'll, I'll have a conversation with them.
About Clint Conley Court?
Uh, let's not. I, I copywritten that. So the, I would ask the people that had, that, that had issue earlier with the lot size. Have you, have, have we discussed this enough? Do you have any other concerns, or should we move forward?
I think it sounds good. I like the way Mr. Tim addressed it and the way Mr. Mike addressed it too. So I think it's good.
Mr. Bray?
I disagree, and I think
I disagree, and I think fifteen feet between houses is nowhere even close to being big enough. I mean, that's just, that's a one and a half basketball hoops away from each other. That's so damn close, it's not even funny. And you're putting houses on top of each other. The lots are just too darn small. I actually would recommend that we don't even approve this, but that's my opinion, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could address that for one second?
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Bray, uh, I don't live in the city. And one of the reasons I don't live in the city is because I like to not have neighbors right on top of me. Um, philosophically speaking, one of the benefits that we have in cities is we provide public utilities. And so you don't have to have a septic system, you don't have to have a well. Um, and so you're able to put homes next to each other, and it's kind of an economy of scale issue. Um, developers are able to put a hundred and eight homes into a property this size. Um, and yes, i- it does require them to be uh, quote-unquote, too close to each other. Um, but I think it's a bit of a fantasy to think that we can require everybody to have a one acre parcel inside the city. Uh, I just don't know if a developer could even make money uh, doing that. And I'll, I'll be the jerk when I say it, if you want an acre of land, you might need to move out of the city.
Right, okay, um. Any other discussions or can I have a motion from anyone?
I'll motion whatever was brought up. Do I need to go through it all?
I don't, I don't mind helping you if that helps.
Okay.
It'll be your motion, but I'll, but I will help you with the verbiage. Um, so here's, here's what I had, and if you want to adopt it as your own. Um, the, we moved to recommend uh, to and. We'd move recommend to the city council that we approve the preliminary White Pine Trails PUD plan. Subject to the approval of the master deed, the stormwater agreement, um, the um. The application or the addition of the street trees, as discussed, to um. One in front of each home except on the corner lots, which would have two. Uh, that all traffic uh, for construction go up Cedar Springs Drive. And that the planning, planning commission uh, will be um, deciding on a method for appeal for any homeowner. Uh, that that would like a variance. I know that really is not very close.
Uh, Mr. Conley, also the six foot on one side, nine foot on the other.
Fifteen foot.
Go ahead.
I, I believe also Mr. Womack wanted some language in there about approval from the city attorney.
Was the city attorney, okay, so for the master deed part, right?
Correct.
So all that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Uh, I will second that.
Okay.
Before we move on.
Well, uh, I think you should also, uh, as part of your motion, you're recommending approval because it meets the standards of section forty. Dash six oh one and forty dash six oh four.
And Madam Clark, are you comfortable with that motion?
Can you please clarify setback requirements, if it's gonna be six foot and nine foot on each side or either side or a combination? There was a couple of discussions on fifteen feet total, or if it will be required that it's six and nine.
Your motion, Mr. Nixon, so which one do you want?
I thought it was fifteen feet total, but yet he could do six or nine on each side, wasn't that correct?
That's, that's a practical application. I think if you said a minimum of of uh.
Right, a minimum of six feet.
Yeah. Right, a minimum of six feet on one side and nine on the other. It gives the homeowner the opportunity to uh, uh. Move their house around, but you still could end up with houses uh, twelve feet apart.
Okay, yeah, let's do that then. We'll do the six on one, nine on the other.
Is that clear enough, Ms. Clark?
So you have six foot and nine foot minimum, correct?
Yes.
Okay, alright, got it.
Okay, that motion's on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of that motion, uh, please signify with by the eye?
I know.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, um, moving on to the second motion, which of course, or the second part of this, which is related. Uh, we also have to recommend to the city council, or not recommend, either way, uh, the condominium. Excuse me, the condominium subdivision plan um, related to this. Mr. Um, Johnson or Mr. Womack, is there anything else additionally that we need to to discuss on that aspect of it before we move forward?
Um, I, I guess I would say similar, and and Mr. Johnson already addressed this, but similar to the PUD that the. Master deed be approved of by the city attorney, and that there be some kind of stormwater agreement in place uh, through the city engineer. Otherwise, I think it doesn't warrant much discussion.
Uh, they do have to provide a survey, that's a, uh, I'm sure they can come up with that. And then uh, conditions of approval, uh, that would be a condition of approval. Uh, and then any recommendations of approval would would include that it meets the standards of section eighteen point. Two eleven of the condominium ordinance.
Okay, so it was eighteen two eleven of the condominium ordinance. The uh, approval of the city attorney of the master deed, approval of the engineer of the stormwater agreement. And I feel like I've already lost one. What was the other thing? Or was there not another?
Providing a survey?
Providing a survey.
And one other, one other fine point in that you are recommending approval of the drawing dated August twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
And Madam Clark, are you satisfied with that motion?
Was that a motion?
Yes, I have a motion.
Okay, I guess that's a motion.
We anticipated motion, I apologize.
Would anyone like to make that motion, that, to make it official? You don't have to say it, just as, as the city.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor is approving that as, as uh, Miss Johnson, Mrs. Johnson has that, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Motion carries. Okay. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is uh, related to the Cedar Springs Museum. Uh, they have a zoning application for storage construction. And that we would need to recommend to the city council, if I understand this correctly. Uh, who would like to explain that? Is that Mr. Womack or Mr. Johnson?
That's just me.
Okay.
So, really, um, it's kind of convoluted, but. You know, this is something I would have approved as zoning administrator if it was located anywhere else. Uh, but it is located on city property in Morley Park. Um, so it does require city council approval. And then in discussions with various city council members, they said, yeah, give it to the planning commission and make them weigh in on it, so. Uh, it's not very complicated. They wanna kind of wall up that uh, overhang that they have. That faces uh, the parking lot, uh, it'll provide them with some additional storage. And it's just not a very complicated project, but uh, if the planning commission has any insights or thoughts uh, before. I take it to the city council, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so hearing that, does the planning commission have any thoughts or opinions on this? Or questions? Hearing none? Would someone like to make a motion to recommend to the city council that we approve it?
I will motion that we approve this uh, plan as presented.
Wait a second? Any further discussion now that we have a motion on the table? Okay, all in favor of recommending you to this, to the city council that we approve of the Cedar Springs Museum zoning application, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Next thing on the agenda, this is uh, nine E in the new business. This is a motion to approve a seven hundred and sixty-eight square foot garage at one twenty-three Oak Street is what's on the agenda. Um, who would like to walk us through that one?
Uh, that would be me as well, just give me one second, I gotta find it.
Okay.
Uh, here we go. So, uh, the original application, I believe, is in your packets. So this would be starting at page ninety-eight of your packet. Um, I did ask Ms. Wolf to provide some additional information, uh, which she did, I believe, yesterday or today. So I did email that to the board earlier today, I. There, there's not a whole lot of extra information, um, it does here, say here, an eight foot sidewall. Uh, it does not provide the overall height. Um, the overall height has to be, I believe, less than fifteen foot. And then let me share my screen here for a second.
Thank you.
So if you can see my screen, this is what's being proposed, uh, again, not terribly complicated stuff. But uh, the ordinance does require that the planning commission review and approve of any accessory building. That's gonna be larger than seven hundred and twenty square feet. Um, I believe this is just slightly larger than that. Uh, and of course, the idea was that on small lots, we didn't want people putting up humongous garages that would. Um, block the sun and block the wind of the next door neighbor. Uh, so you see here, uh, it's being proposed that the garage will be at least ten foot from the primary structure. It'll have a ten foot side setback, uh, and a significant setback from the rear property line, so. I have no objections to it, but it is the planning commission's call whether to approve it or not.
Okay, any questions or comments from the planning commission? Okay, hearing none, uh, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve this.
Wait a second?
Second.
Further discussion, any questions, anything we'd like to add before we move forward with this?
Yeah, uh, Mike, uh, looking at that, that's a seven foot high door, right? They're going with uh, length times height, right? Not height times width.
Uh, this would be floor space.
Well, when you're looking at what she provided us today, it looks like the door would be eighteen by seven. Is what I'm looking at, and I wanna make sure that's not eighteen feet tall, cuz that's out of ordinance.
Yeah, so you guys only have to approve of the square footage, which is seven sixty-eight, I think.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, the ordinance requires that the building be less than fifteen feet tall. Uh, which I was not provided with that information, uh, so Ms. Wolf will have to provide that before I approve of it.
Okay.
But your motion is simply to approve of the square footage, but thank you for noticing that.
Okay.
Is it, is it possible, well, you know what, never mind, never mind. I'll, I'll just let you figure that out, Ms. Wolf. Anyone, anyone else? Anything you'd like to add before we vote? Okay, all in favor of approving the seven hundred and sixty-eight square foot garage at one twenty-three, one twenty-three Oak Street, aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to old business, uh, this is a applicant we've seen before. Um, it's our last meeting, uh, where this is the uh, item A under old business. The Agromed LLC at thirteen nine oh three White Creek. Who would be walking us through this today?
Hi there, commission and uh, Mr. Womack, this is Aaron Smith uh, with Agromed. I've also got Cindy, uh, Cindy Devonport and uh, Greg Mackey and Tracy Powers here to help answer any questions. Um, Mr. Womack, if you'd like me to kind of take a lead on this, or did you want to, to make the introductions, it's up to you.
Um, I, I guess I would ask Mr. Johnson. Um, I reviewed your most recent report, um, I kind of feel like we're pretty close on this. Uh, but maybe, Mr. Johnson, you would wanna go over your report real quick and then allow the applicant to address any ongoing concerns?
Sure. Uh, my report uh, is in response to the information they submitted uh. Uh, late August, uh, in particular, they give us a, they gave us a revised site plan dated eight twenty-eight eighty. They gave us a better description of the marijuana processing facility, a revised floor plan, a description of marijuana delivery. A waste disposal plan, customer plan, building elevation illustrations, and they provided some comments on uh. Expected vehicle generation. So my report is based on the uh, comments on those materials. Uh, they did provide, uh, I think, li- late last week, a, another site plan and additional information. Which basically, as Mr. Womack said, satisfies uh, virtually all of the uh, items in my report. Uh, they gave us, one of my big concerns, and I'll have the applicant address this. Was how to get employees into the south side of the, of the building, because they would have to climb up and down the truck dock. They are taking out the fence, I think all the fences there, putting a dumpster back there, which would allow the employees to come in the south entrance. Uh, without having, by going around the uh, truck dock, because the fences will no longer be there. And I'll have the applicant verify that in a second here, but uh, and then all the other uh. Points, I believe they also uh, were able to address. The planning commission should take a look at the building materials, I believe they uh, meet the uh. Requirements of our ordinance. The uh. Uh, issue that came up at the last meeting was how many trips they might generate, and they gave us the. The, the information that they might have thirty customer trips per hour maximum. That's thirty trips in, thirty trips out, so that's, that's sixty per hour. Which is a little bit on the high side, but uh. The carrying capacity of White Creek Avenue is really able to handle that, uh, so the traffic volumes are under capacity, I believe. The roadway can handle the extra traffic being generated by this particular use. I provided in my report a brief analysis of how the project meets the special land use standards of the ordinance. Which you'll need to cite in your motion, and then there's some other information in there as well. Uh, again, the, the site, site plan that they gave us, that I did review, that you may not have, is dated uh, nine twenty-eight twenty. And that is the site plan that uh, they have submitted, which meets uh, all the information. That I asked for in my report that stated September seventeenth. Any questions from the planning commission?
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have some notes I wrote down here as well, would you like to hear those now, or would you like to hear from the uh, applicant?
Um, well, let's, let's hear from the applicant, and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Womack, and see what we can work. Um, well, let's let's hear from the applicant and then we'll come back to you, Mr. Womack, and see what we can work out here.
Thank you.
Okay, great. If you'd like, I can walk through the points that Mr. Johnson brought up and show where they've been made adjustments on the site plan to to be satisfactory for for what he required. I can share my screen if you guys would like to see that. I can do it kind of as a one by one through through his points. Or if you have specific questions that you would like me to address on the site plan, I can I can show you that as well.
Go ahead and share your screen if if Ms. Rome has got that set up so you can do so. And wa- walk through the points of the plan. That's that's fine. Unless someone has a question, I'll entertain questions from the commissioners and a point along the way if you have a question for the applicant. So go ahead and this it's it's yours.
Are you guys able to see the screen here?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So this is a little bit zoomed in on the site plan itself. I can I can start at the top if you would like to see noting some of the questions from Mr. Johnson and and how we've replied to them. One of them had to do with the dumpster. And at the time, we had the dumpster in the northwest area of the parking area, which has been turned into a greenscape with with a tree. And and we've added four of them to kind of be in compliance with what you guys would would be requiring. And then what we've done is we've located that dumpster to the very rear of the the building and to the parcel. This gets it out of the way and makes it much easier for the dumpster to be picked up by by the garbage company. We've also added six inches of gravel access area to make that entrance and exit into that garbage much easier and not to impede kind of flow of traffic. That was one of the big questions there to kind of give you an idea of what it will look like. If you still see this, we've we've moved it to the to the south of the building, which will be shielded and won't impede with with current traffic flow, if you can see that. I guess we can keep walking through some of his questions. If you have anything specific, feel free to ask while I have the site plan up. As well, and the other big big point he wanted to make or to clarify was the employee access on the south side of the building. So if you look here where where this door is being noted, the employees are going to have the ability, they'll be parking on the south side of the parcel out of the way of where the entrance and exit of of the building are. This will allow them to enter into the south side of of the building relatively easily by walking through this this gravelled area and accessing that door. It will not the the door itself for employee access will not be down in where the the dumpsters previous were. This this existing door is actually to the left on the ground level itself. So with the fence down, they will have easy access in and out to that south side of the building for the processing facility. We've also made note of which is the entrance door, which is on the property going to be located on the east side of the building. We've stripped in and we've we've made the designated parking space in front of that door. We've striped it and kind of taken it away to kind of make the entrance a little bit easier for the individuals that are walking in and out. Again, regarding traffic, I believe we've answered all the questions related to traffic that are unsatisfactory of your ordinance. One question that was brought up was the facade materials and making sure that they were in compliance with section forty four six three of of the zoning ordinance. And what we are using is what is on the existing building right now, which is an architectural metal panels. Currently, the building is 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 a very bright white, I guess you could say. It's a little little dull. We would like to repaint that into kind of like an off white to a light gray color. We'd be adding some things, as you can see here, such as planners in front of some of the windows as well as some some overhangs, so long as the building department allows it to meet all the standards. As you can see here, we'll be using pretty much the existing building and the existing parking lot. The parking lot has has more than enough parking spots that are required. And I believe some of those are some of the main questions that were brought up by Mr. Johnson. If anybody else has any specific questions, I can answer them now. And that seems to be it. Go ahead.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Smith, could you explain how the marijuana from the processing facility will get to the retail portion?
Yes. So I'm glad you brought that up. I believe that was on the very end of your your write up. So at the same area that the employees enter, the the processing facility, as of right now, they will also be exiting that with finished product. That finished product will then travel around the building and be entered into the east entrance of the building, which will then be brought back into the secured area within the provisioning center itself. So the way that our stores currently that are operating are set up primarily allow the through the state of Michigan, you're allowed to bring product that is purchased on the wholesale side through through employee entrances as well as through customer entrances, as long as they're brought right back in and 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 secured in the security area. So basically, it would be as simple as walking it out, walking it around. There is a process that has to takes place. Once that product is then in that side of the building, we then have to to get on metric, notify the state that we accepted those at what time. So there there is a process to it. It's not simply as easy as just walking it from one side to another. So that's that's kind of the gist of it right now.
And also, if I could follow up on that, where will the marijuana be delivered to the processing center? How will that happen?
So a lot of what's going to happen there is going to be going to be product that's already refined. So that will also come in the same area, the employee entrance. Just like the marijuana that gets delivered to the provisioning center will enter through the entrance door in the east, the marijuana that enters the processing facility will enter on the door to the south.
Okay, so you'll have some product coming in from offsite through both the processing entrance and the retail entrance?
Correct. The the I would I would probably say ninety five percent of the product that gets sold in our stores or that will be sold in this store are going to be coming in that east entrance. The only time there might be something that isn't or it'll all be brought in that entrance, but a small amount of it will come out of that south door, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, once it's processed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Miss, any, Mr. Womack, you said you had some points?
I do. Thank you. So I'll just kind of walk through my points and then I guess applicant can address them afterwards. So my understanding is that this building is on city water, but not on city sewer. I understand, and you can see on the site plan there that there's a drain field. Now, just based on the geography of the site, if they were to be put onto the sewer, it would require listation, which will cost a significant amount of money. So I'm not asking that the planning commission require that at this time. But what I would ask is that if the green field were to fail at some point in the future, that they would then in the future be required to hook up to the sewer system. I I know that the applicant addressed some of this, but there are some parking spots that should be removed. One which you can see in front of the customer entrance has been blocked off already. It does appear that at the customer exit, that they have eliminated those two north, south spots there. And then the only other one I think we should probably consider addressing is the parking spot that is closest to the driveway immediately north of the driveway entrance. I'm just a little concerned that people would benefit from some clear vision at that location. I think they and Mr. Johnson, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they easily meet parking standards without those double spots. So that might be a consideration for the planning commission. I I do have some concerns, though, about applicants' marijuana delivery plans, along with Mr. Johnson. I was very concerned about the truck dock. And of course, now that the